My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murgy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people, the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know? It's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day and that experience is really heartwarming and I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
Having a quorum present, I called this meeting of the Board of Education to order. The Board would like to welcome the audience and thank you for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live on TV 190 or online at tcaps.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join Ms. Lepine's 4th grade class from Cherry Noelle Elementary in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll go a little slower doing the next items. I usually pass through just with the review, approval portion of the agenda. I do believe that there is at least one change.
Yes, I'd like to move that we remove item D under the consent, which is on expanding enhanced emotional health, the E3 project, for consideration later time.
Okay. So that makes sense. Is that jive, I think, because we had a separate update?
So yeah, so we got an email from Wendy Hirschberger, the director of the Grand Traverse County Health Department, that there were some questions that were asked in Board Committee that we forwarded to her team. And so we had a discussion on Friday, I believe, and she followed it up with an email that I forwarded to the Board saying that they needed a little more time to review those questions and work with their legal counsel. They have new legal counsel. And so she had said they wouldn't be able to have it done for tonight, but did plan on having an answer back to the Board on those items with the MOU. And as soon as we have that, we'll make sure that gets to the Committee here hopefully next month.
Okay. And then I think there's been other feedback from other Board members. I think probably you had something, but are you okay with deferring that as well?
As long as we come back to it.
I think we will.
And those programs are already in existence.
They are, and we'll continue. It will not change, you know, anything from the, you know, those moving as they are at both high schools. The reason why this MOU has to come to the Board is that based on new law, it requires Board to give affirmative component and the Health Department has to provide that for the grant. And so we have to provide them our minutes that has that Board action in there. In the past, we haven't had to do an MOU on these programs. So that's what we were asked to do. And so again, after those questions, Wendy sent that email. And so I'm going to continue to make sure to get that. And like I said, I'm very, very hopeful to be able to bring that back to Committee and the programs will stay as they are. No issues from that standpoint until that happens. And again, I don't anticipate anything that. Just a response back to the questions and the Board can take it from there.
Yeah, no issues on grant timing or anything, so we're fine.
May I ask what committee in specific you're referring to?
That will go to the Executive Committee, just the same as it did this past month. Whenever we have any kind of contracts or agreements from that standpoint, that goes to our Executive Committee.
But it's something that will be moved on. Regardless of whether it goes on consent or discussion, it can always be pulled from consent from any Board member at the full Board meeting.
So if the Executive Committee chooses for it to be consent, any Board member can ask for that to become a discussion item at the same time in the process of...
It doesn't require, that's just automatic. All right. So removing that item. Any other changes to the consent calendar or the agenda?
No.
If not, can I have a motion remembering to do as amended?
I move to accept the agenda as modified.
Sounds good. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Recognition, deferring to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, tonight, I'm very excited to recognize two students from Traverse City Central High School that have been named finalist in the 68th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Both Ted Arnold and Rowan Smith were among 16,000 students named as 2023 National Merit Semi-finalists. As finalists, they have the opportunity to continue in their competition for 7,250 National Merit Scholarships. All winners of Merit Scholarship awards are chosen from the finalist group based on their abilities, skills, and accomplishments. Evaluation criteria include the finalist's academic record information, about the student's activities and leadership, and the finalist's essay. So at this point, I would ask that our principal at Central High School, Ms. Jessie Houghton, come up and talk a little bit about both of these fine students.
Good evening. Hello. I know you think that Mother Nature is tricking us, but three good things happened today. Number one, we're on daylight savings time. Number two, spring sports started today. Who wants to play baseball, golf? And number three, most important, the reason why I'm here tonight is we get to start to celebrate the class of 2023. So we have two amazing seniors from Central High School that I get to brag on a little bit tonight. So I'm going to invite them to come up. Rowan and Ted, come on up. So as Dr. Van Wagner said, the National Merit finalist for us, representing this region, there's only three in the entire Northwest Ed. The other one comes from Lelandaw County. And then these two outstanding students here in the entire Traverse City area are in this honor. They are selected through their PSAT scores, which they take the fall of their junior year. And then once they qualify at that high level of scoring, they then have to submit an application, which involves an essay, a letter from their counselors, and of course, their transcript that shows them. And so they move from the semi into the finalist category. So congratulations to you two. I'm going to talk a little bit about each one. So I'm going to start with Ted. All right, Ted, his parents Judy and Paul are with us. Paul, I think, is back there. Oh, right, right there. Okay. So in general, some comments about Ted as a student. He is driven. He is focused. He is community-connected. And he engages in our local and state issues. So as a student, Ted started with us at the TCAPS Montessori. He then went through the TAG program at Central Grade, went to East Middle School, and then on to Central High School. He is currently carrying a 3.83 GPA with us. He has completed nine AP courses. He has done a lot of foreign language online through Michigan Virtual, which has accelerated a lot of that. He is a writing studio mentor. So what that means is that he helps some of our underclassmen mentor them with feedback through their writing and just overall academic growth. It's a pretty cool honor to get chosen as that and to work with those kids. Two years now? Yeah, cool. And then he's also worked at our Black and Gold Quarterly, which is that magazine that we try to get you guys. It's outstanding. He's done a ton of work with that, too, through his time at Central. So his activities. So Ted recently represented us at the Model UN Conference down in Kalamazoo. His country was Ireland. He wrote and delivered thoughtful comments representing his views on global issues. Ted is also our National Honor Society Treasurer. And he's the leader, he's our student leader for the Global Studies Academic Community this year as well. Last fall, Ted was chosen to serve as the first youth representative on the City of Traverse City's Planning Committee. So there was an article about him, I think, in the paper, too. So he attends all those meetings regularly and provides thoughtful feedback to the Board on local projects and initiatives. Currently, he is working with the City of Traverse City on affordable housing. It's kind of a cool concept for him and his voice. He has also done internships with the Village of Elk Rapids, with Tattle, and with the Peninsula Community Library, mainly around preservation of historical documents. Ted, when I reflected with him a little bit about, "How did you get here? And who do you want to thank along the way?" He talked a lot about the support and encouragement that he's received from his parents and from his teachers to really push him to be the best that he can be. He has experienced high academic rigor and challenge at TCAPS, and that's been inspiring for him and has led to his growth. I have a quote from his AP Government teacher, Ms. Paige Paul. She says that Ted has been successful academically at Central High School, but a transcript only provides a partial picture into Ted. "Ted always goes above and beyond in his spare time to pursue his interests and the goals and contribute to the wider community. He has earned the respect and admiration of the staff here at Central High School, his fellow students, and members of the Traverse City area community through his numerous commitments and activities." This will not surprise you. Ted is planning to study political science this next year. History, international relations, and both of these students have great... They're kind of waiting for the college acceptance to come in, all of them. But he has a great list of colleges that I'm sure that he will have lots of options for him in the future. Congratulations to Ted Arnold. All right. Rowan, on to you. All right, Rowan's parents, Heather and Caleb, are with us, too. And some family members, too. So Rowan, some general comments about you as a student at Central. Authentic love for learning. Kind-hearted young adult. And he always adds a unique perspective to conversations. So a little bit of Rowan's background. He also attended the TCAPS Montessori. He went on to Greenspire for middle school and then Central High School. He carries a 3.93 GPA. He has been part of the Simotech program since his freshman year. He has taken six AP courses. He spent one year doing online learning through TCAPS. He is dual-enrolled at NMC for probably math, right? Calc II? Calc II, yep. And then he's really proud. Last year, he took AP Computer Science, wrote a five on that exam. This year, he's independent studying another AP Computer Science program with Mr. Barron, our computer science teacher. So there's a few different branches in the AP Computer Science world, and he's accomplished one, and now he's eager to get on to the next one. So Rowan, in his spare time, has started a club. It's a card trading club, The Magic Gathering, for students at TCAPS Montessori. And he works with a local business game store to help provide this opportunity for students at the Montessori as a place for them to explore their hobby and to get to know each other. He facilitates that club. Rowan did an internship with a Lelandaw Cheese Company, and he now works for them as the Dairy Tech. Interesting piece of knowledge. When I talked to him about what he's thankful for through his academic career, he said, "The freedom and the flexibility of his education and the rich diversity of the opportunities for him." It was super interesting talking to him. Of course, these students who excel academically, they've got a wealth of math and science and Tattle, AP Gov, and the foreign language. Rowan said, "In my art class, I just loved Ms. Sandy in my art class." So the diversity of offerings, the curiosity that he has shown, it's really touched a lot of our staff here. Many of his teachers have said to me that they have really enjoyed sharing ideas with him and listening to his thinking. I have a quote from Ms. Julie Pocket, who was Rowan's AP Calculus teacher. She says, "Rowan is a brilliant and unconventional young man. He has a mind that likes to turn over ideas and look at them from the many different perspectives he has gained from his life experiences and his unique diverse interests. In my class, he frequently served as a mentor to his classmates, gently guiding them to better understand the content using his good-natured humor." Other teachers mentioned your humor, too, Rowan. "He is unlike all the other students I have taught in the best of ways, and he will change the world. I am certain of that." So Rowan plans to study computer science. He's really looking to make connections within the field of computer science to other fields. Maybe, he said, food science. And he also has a great list of colleges he's waiting for substances. Congratulations.
All right. Moving on to public comment. I assume there is a public comment, so I will go in and say the Board has set aside this time for public comment. Individuals addressing the Board shall have one opportunity to speak and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3.
Mary Van Valen?
Yep, Megan. I just wanted to let everybody know that as the secretary, it's my obligation to time the three minutes per person. And since some of you might have been here before, just want to let you know I will not time you until you get to the podium and you start speaking. And 15 seconds out from three minutes, I will wave this friendly sign to give you a little warning.
Very green. Can you hear me?
I want to check and see if it's loud.
It's on. Hello?
There we go.
I just have to get up, cold and personal. I'm here for a very short message. I was one of the people who came in December with concerns about the funding for STEM. And I'm back on March 13th to tell you that I went to the community forum on Tuesday night. And thanks to Heidi and Dr. Van Wagner, the whole community got to give input and see what was coming. And I just, phew, I just want to thank you not only for moving forward with STEM, but also for doing it in a way that the community could be a part of it. And I thank you so much for that. I think our STEM program has so much to offer our students at all levels. And so I'm particularly pleased that you're moving forward. Thank you so much. Okay, Scott Richard?
Scott Richards from Interlaken. I'd like to give a shout out to Sheriff Brokovich of Lelandaw County and State Trooper John Hatfield. They did an excellent presentation on cybersecurity for our youth. And they're going to have another one in Sutton's Bay. And I highly suggest you go and see it, especially your parents. Second, this gender queer and orcs and crack and Kara and the sun, these are pornography books. They do not belong in high schools. You have to be 18 years of age to enter into a adult bookstore. And I have pictures right here, if anybody wants to look at them. It's pornography. And you don't know what kind of pain you're going to cause people. You really don't. Especially very young and precious minds. And this is not freedom of speech, it's pornography. Second of all, the Second Amendment. The God-given Second Amendment was given to us to protect the God-given First Amendment. I've shot an M60, an M50, M16, Law Rocket, M40 grenade launcher. I could put them all right there on the ground. They're not going to hurt you. You have to pick them up and shoot it. And weapons don't kill people. People kill people. The other thing is I'd like to talk about Martin Luther King Jr. You should all look up how Martin Luther King Jr. really got his name. And so you have to Google his father. Thank you.
Philip Leet?
Hi there. Good morning, evening. Many, many new faces. But pre-2016, I was a very active voice. I was a teacher at West Senior High School. I was robotics, dance, theater. I was all over the district. And I want to take a moment to share a little bit of the vision that goes back to STEM that started in 2012 when I took up the STEM projects and the robotics. It was amazing working with the high school robotics. At that point, they were the toxic bots, West Senior High School, 3767. Then they became Titan Robotics. Their passion and their younger brothers and sisters started clamoring for what they were doing. So I used those students. And we went to the elementary schools and to the middle schools. And those high school kids began teaching parents how to mentor and volunteer. We used the space under Joe Esper at West Senior High School to give those parents a place to come and learn how to mentor elementary and middle school robotics teams. By 2018, we had more students in elementary and middle school competing after school in Northwest Michigan, this ISD, than anywhere else in the state of Michigan. By 2019, they granted the state championship for elementary and middle school robotics to the Grand Traverse Resort. It was something absolutely remarkable to see hundreds of students on a weekly basis going into the old Long Lake Building and the old Saban Elementary because we needed a place to play regularly and often. I then started pushing my boundaries outside of the district, growing even more and more. And then, of course, COVID hit. We switched superintendents. We brought in a very new board. And somewhere along the line, that vision of what the high school STEM lab space could become, so much more than just a high school space for high school students, but a centralized space so that like the football team goes down and runs summer camps, and the soccer team brings out students at middle school, and the baseball teams do Little League programs. The high school programs were going to be so much more than one day a year, Super Science Saturday. No offense to the Raptors, it's amazing. I love Super Science Saturday. But one day a year isn't enough. To the Hour of Code initiative, amazing. But one hour out of 180 days isn't enough. You have hundreds and hundreds of parents who want to go forward and help, but they don't have a place to do it. So my hope is that with the new STEM labs, Heidi leading the way, it will become a space that will become a district resource beyond just what the Raptors and the Titans already bring to the district.
Bill Weisner?
Bill Weisner, Traverse City. I was at Public Library, Woodmere Public Library, all day Saturday. And I had a four-foot wide sign, just like this one. Says, "The Rainbow Belongs to God," it's a sign of his promise. You can find out more at tcfamily.org. And the reason I was there is to hand out these handouts about TC Family and LGBTQ. I usually say about TC Family and Up North Pride LGBTQ, even though it's not there because basically two different worldviews, their view compared to TC Family's. You can read that at tcfamily.org. And the other one is a proclamation for morality. Gave away over 100 of each of those and gave away over 40 of the DVDs, which compare an old Earth of the Grand Canyon. You can see it. I've got these handouts and these DVDs for anybody here who would like one tonight free. An old Earth looks at the top to the bottom of the Grand Canyon as 5,800 million years. A global flood says no. There was a recent global flood, the flood of Noah, within the last thousands of years. So, and the reason I was there, I'll watch for your banner there, is because they had a class put on by people from Up North Pride, I believe. It's advertised at the library. And Pole Star North to work with teens and tweens on the issue of LGBTQ. Basically, I would interpret that promoting homosexuality. You might say that's harsh. But bottom line, that's what it's promoting, teens and tweens. So we were there. We gave out our information. Talked to the head librarian. She was okay with, I mean, we just followed the rules. Offered our flyers, kind of engaged with the main speaker. She was there. I was out front, kind of challenging them a little bit when they were unpacking. She said, "There will be silence." There will be silence, looking at me. No. There will not be silence when you're working with teens and tweens and promoting homosexuality. You should be coming to me saying, "What's your concern?" But no, they wanted me to be quiet. So I simply challenged them a little bit on the way in. When the driver, possibly husband of this person, left, he gave me five middle fingers pronounced. He said, "You're just one of those Nazis and Hitlers. That's what you're talking about." Actually, the Nazi Party started in a gay bar. And if you look at the foundation of this movement, it's got faulty foundation. It shouldn't be promoted to the kids in any way. Thank you for your consideration.
Jay Bergen?
Burger.
Burger?
Thank you for the time to speak. I thought I'd be the only one here maybe. And I'm just impressed that all these people are here to talk, that you guys are willing to listen, that you do a very tough job. And so I'm just super appreciative. I think it's a healthy sign that people want to come and talk in front of you, whether you agree with them or not. I'm here representing myself as just a dad and grandpa. I'm also part of a group in town called Safer Kids, Safer Schools. And again, one of the things we learned in that task force is that school safety, including mass shootings, are very tied to how kids feel connected to their community, to their schools, to their teachers, to their peers. And I wasn't aware even of some of the things that are so positive and going on. I think there's so many good things that are going on in our school district. And there's just not enough time to promote them all. But the Grand Traverse County Health Department, the Expanding Enhancing Emotional Health Project, I think is one of those examples. It's meeting kids where they are. It follows the law. It gives them access to things. And those are the kind of things we really need to be promoting. I know there were some really good questions at the executive committee meeting the other day. I never thought I'd be on a spin bike watching an executive committee at TCAP's board meeting. But there were some of the questions that I would have asked. And you know, what I came away and learned was those things are covered in the law. Memorandum of Understanding matches what's in the law. And if we put our kids first, those are the kind of things we'll pour our resources into. So thank you very much.
Lisa Trombley?
Thank you, Lisa Trombley, Peninsula Township. Oops, sorry there. First of all, I have great respect for each of you serving our community in this critical role. Students in general, but TCAP students in particular are our future. They are, they will ultimately comprise our workforce. They will become our community leaders, our state leaders, and even potentially our country leaders. As a parent, I was directly involved in my son's education. I engaged as a parent with teachers and coaches, as well as formally as part of parent-teacher organizations. As a working parent, that was not always easy, and I understand that. Regardless of their level of participation, I have little doubt that the vast majority of parents and guardians represented here and for many that I speak with, they are interested and involved in their children's academic experience. As a business leader, I understand the purpose and importance of mission statements, values, and strategic objectives. These, along with the leadership decisions, your policies, and the budgets, those clearly indicate the priorities and the predispositions of an organization. In general, I think you have a fabulous set and a very comprehensive set of guiding principles, and I commend you on that. However, I'm concerned that one word is missing across all of those guiding principles, and that is the word "parent" or "guardian." It doesn't appear anywhere. And whether it's a decision regarding counseling or curriculum, parents must be actively engaged by the administration, by teachers, by coaches, in every step of their students' education. MCL 38010 dictates it's the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children. Not, and I encourage you all to remember that, not just because MCL says it, but because it's the right thing to do. So thank you again for all that you do.
That's the end of public comment.
All right. Thank you. Moving on with superintendent's report, deferring to Dr. Von Wagner.
Okay. Want to start out, talk a little bit about First Robotics and competition. So now we have a few of our folks to our kids here tonight. And I want to start from the competition that happened at Kelvin College last weekend in Grand Rapids. Titan Robotics Team 3767 competed last weekend and came in second place for the qualifying segment of the competition out of 40 teams. They received the Industrial Design Award sponsored by General Motors. This award celebrates the team that demonstrates industrial design principles, striking a balance between form, function, and aesthetics. And then at Central High, the Raptors battled to a 7-5 record in 15th place after the qualification matches. You know, they had some issues with the robots early, but came back strong. And the Raptors won the Innovation and Control Award. So very proud of the two awards that those teams had the opportunity to earn. And I'm going to have Heidi talk a little bit about the district competition. And so we're very fortunate to be able to have all of it here in Traverse City coming up. So Heidi, I'll pass that over to you.
Yes, always super excited to talk about anything related to STEM, of course. And our First Robotics competition, some history for you. We were the first competition to actually happen in Michigan was at Traverse City Central. So the very first district competition. So we've been able to hold that every year. Another stat, we were the very last event that got shut down right when we went into COVID. So we have lots of interesting history with First Robotics, and we're excited to continue hosting those events here. So first, I'd like to give a shout out to Central for hosting Jessie Houghton and her team, and especially John Fowler and Marla Gerber. They have organized the event this year and done a tremendous job organizing over 100 volunteers to actually make the event run. So in collaboration with our, we have community sponsors, as well as Cone Drive is actually our sponsor of the event this year. Super appreciative of their sponsorship to be able to host in Traverse City, as well as all our sponsors throughout Traverse City. It's a big collaboration to bring sponsors and students and mentors together to do it. So the event, actually, we start setting up on Wednesday night. And Friday, the competition starts. So Friday from, opening ceremonies start at 10:00, and the pits close at 7:30 at night. So open to the public, all of these events. And then again on Saturday from 8:00 AM, and the award ceremony is from 5:00 to 6:30. We have a couple exciting things to talk about. Number one, we have over 600 elementary students and buses coming from every elementary school to the competition this year. And they get a front row seat to the pits, as well as in the stands to watch the competition. We also have a board member and industry tourists from 11:00 to 12:00 on Saturday to be able to thank our sponsors for all their contributions. And our mentors will be there. So super excited about that piece. And then really, just to talk about the true gift of First Robotics and this program is really that collaboration, that problem-solving, that teamwork. And it really stretches from all gamuts of STEM, from all the way from the engineering side to the art and business side. And so bringing all these pieces together to not only, you know, market your robot, but also build a high-quality robot that competes against 40 other or 39 other robots. So super excited about the event on Saturday. We ask that you join us if you are able on Saturday for a tour. Board members and community sponsors, as well as, again, for everybody else in the public. It is open to the public, free of charge, does not cost anything to get in. And it's pretty amazing if you have not ever been to a First Robotics event. It's like a sports event using robots and partnerships and alliances, so.
So again, Heidi, if anybody wants to volunteer still, I know we could use some folks.
Yes, if anybody wants to volunteer, they can contact Marla Gerber at TC Central. And she will be able to set you up with the positions we still have open. Some that were highlighted yesterday were we're looking for an AV person to help run the monitors and the AV. We're looking for a safety person. And the majority of the jobs do not require a technical background. So if you just want to help and you don't necessarily have a technical background, there's a place for you to help.
Heidi, what time did you say the tour on Saturday is?
11:00 to 12:00.
Okay. Because the letter I got today, I think we all got, says 12:00 to 1:00.
Oh, that's my mistake. It is 11:00 to 12:00, and I will update the letter. Thank you for that.
Perfect, that works a lot better.
I think it originally was supposed to be 12:00 to 1:00, but that would, we were worried you're going to be downtime with alliance selections. So 11:00 to 12:00, I will update the letter. Thank you for that.
Okay. So the other thing with robotics I want to update the board on last Tuesday, had the opportunity, again, it was mentioned that Heidi and I had the opportunity to present. Want to thank all the folks at the Opera House, as well as TC Newtech, that gave us the time to be able to do that. And the two board members there, Josie and Beth, were there to be able to also talk with many of the folks that were there. Again, cross-section of business and industry, some of our parents, robotics parents, robotics enthusiasts, STEM enthusiasts just across. And so great opportunity to get different thoughts and feedback. And so overall, I think our initial drawings of the STEM labs, I think were well-received. But want to make sure to stress that those are very, very preliminary beginning. We are actually going to form a committee and making sure that we have students, a part of that that will actually give input. As we talked to even students there, learned a little bit about, you know, some of them want a little space, especially for them to be able to hang out and talk, or along with office space and some of that. So we're going to make sure, you know, these were literally just some drawings to figure out space, budget, some of that. And so we're going to make sure from both schools that we have a stakeholder group put together, just like we have our other projects, just like Montessori, just like Eastern Elementary was done, just like our fields were done for athletics. We're going to make sure that we have a cross-section and especially student voice of our kids are using that in that planning. Also want to, you know, let the board officially know, as well as the community. One of the things that was discussed was the idea of taking the budget at one point was taken down to 7.7 million from the 10 million that was allocated. And, but at the same time, the board had made the statement that we were going to make sure that, you know, what was promised to the community and that element was done. So one of the things is, as I've looked at it, Christine and I have talked, Thomas Hill. And one of the things that we would like to do, knowing where we're at pretty, a lot better with some projects, especially some transportation projects that are on the agenda tonight, and some things with buses that, you know, we haven't, we've had a lot of less buses on the road from COVID to now even with a shortage in drivers and others. And we have some money available to be able to allocate. So I am recommending to the board, and this doesn't take an action, but it would be in our finance committee, the update that we're going to reinstate the $10 million that we had in the original budget for those STEM labs to make sure all the equipment, the facility, all those things that those kids deserve and that our community was promised, that that is realized. And so we're going to go ahead and make that move. And again, that'll be recognized in all of our budget sheets for the next finance committee. So I wanted to make sure to let the board know that, let our community know that. Want to let the community know we very much appreciate that input. I think, you know, some of those things, as we look at, we try and do. And, you know, fortunately, again, the resources are there, and we're committed to making sure that this is a world-class facility for those kids. And so I'm excited to be able to move forward with that. And again, we'll begin the deeper planning with that committee, and we'll keep the board updated as that moves forward. So excited to be able to move forward with that. Also wanted to let you know that on tonight's consent agenda, we will be, you'll be asked to accept the Grand Traverse Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians allocation of funds from the second half of the 2022 2% grant allocation cycle. TCAP is very grateful to receive a grant in the amount of $15,000. This grant will directly benefit the Student Support Network and our summer outreach efforts, a new initiative supporting TCAP students year-round with supportive education-related services, non-academic support to overcome obstacles that may create barriers to learning and sometimes life-sustaining things. And so very, very thankful to the Grand Traverse Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians for that 2% grant. Also want to recognize, had the opportunity last week, the vocal department for TCAP chose to use a generous donation from Mr. William "Bill" Engel to commission a piece by composer Dr. Nuvarde and to work with our students the week of March 6th, all week culminating in a concert at Corson Auditorium at Interlochen Arts Academy on March 9th. Our most advanced ensembles from both high schools performed, as well as the Mandarin Girls Singers and Chamber Choir from the middle schools. Super powerful to see all of our middle school kids from TCAPs, all of our high school kids from TCAPs on the stage at one time. About 180 students singing with a guest composer that wrote the entire... About 180 students singing with a guest composer that wrote the entire concert, and how neat it was to be able to see all of our kids in that venue, and really powerful. Just really proud of them and thankful for the donation from Mr. Engel to be able to have our kids have that opportunity in a wonderful facility. And so just thankful to Interlocking Arts Academy and Dr. Trey Devi for the opportunity to be able to have that facility, to be able to do that. And just can't say how proud we are of those kids. And so with the "Peace Flows" was the name and the final piece that was performed. And so just really, really strong program. And so I want to thank, again, Wendy and all of our vocal arts teachers that just did an amazing job, just wonderful for our kids. Also want to recognize our Academic World Quest. Central and West Senior High students participated in the Regional Academic World Quest last week at Northern Michigan College. Fifteen teams competed to test their knowledge of international affairs. Cole and Trey Harding, Jackson Price and Amara Van Wagner from TC Central finished first and earned a trip to Washington DC next month. Elliot Hayes, Liam Hoxey, Logan Newcombe and Riley Jazz from TC West finished in third place. TC Central teams of Aiden Schluder, Carter DeBrin, and Ben and Nate Brewer finished fourth, and Henry Sullivan and Arthur Logiski-Lee, Hallie Taylor and Dawson Payne tied for fifth. So great opportunity there. I know that group's excited from Central to head off to Washington DC to represent TCAPs, and excited for them for that opportunity. And again, great turnout from all of our teams that had great success with that. Also want to recognize so many of our winter athletics are finishing up, but still a few going. At West Senior High, this winter season, we had Anna Beers wrestling All-State, seventh overall in the individual state finals. John Palmer wrestling All-State, eighth overall in individual state finals. Girls Bowling, regional champions and state runner-up. Taylor Phillips, individual girls bowling, regional champion. Taylor Phillips, Jordan LaFleur, Alyssa Maitland-Tanner, All-State Girls Bowling. Girls and Boys Alpine Ski Big North Champions. Girls Alpine MHSA Division One State Champions. And All-State was Lila Warren, Charlie Schultz, Ellie Gruber, Avery Plummer, Olivia Bagueras and Dylan Moore. And in the Boys Alpine, they were also the MHSA Division One State Champions. All-State was Caleb Lowandowski, Luke Wiersma, Isaac Shapiro, Ben Shermansky, and Grady Ellis. Also Caleb Lowandowski was the Boys Individual State Champion Slalom and Giant Slalom. For Central High School Athletics, we have Carter Banton, All-State Bowling, finishing in the top four individually. Girls and Boys Alpine Ski, Regional Champions, and a right runner-up to Traverse City West. The Trojans head second in both Boys and Girls. So Traverse City TCAPs, we took the top four spots in Alpine Ski in the State Division One. Also Quinn Gerber, Giant Slalom State Champion in Boys Basketball, were the Big North Conference Champions. And recently, as of Friday, and playing here right now, is the Boys Varsity Basketball District Champions, playing in the regional. We wish them well as they go play right now in Gaylord. So again, great, great season, still going some there. So many great, great opportunities in the arts, in our STEM programs, in our athletic programs, our academic programs across TCAPs, and just super, super proud of all of our kids, the ones mentioned and the ones that do so many other activities. And so again, just want to make sure to acknowledge those great things. Also, tonight, there will be a tenure opportunity for Kelsey Lacrosse. The teacher has successfully completed the probationary period with Traverse City Area Public Schools and eligible for tenure effective February 13th, 2023. Then for legislative highlights, a lot going on right now in Lansing. The governor's put her budget, and there's lots of debates going on. Had the chance to meet just this afternoon with Regina Weiss, who is the House Chair of the Education Appropriations Committee. Had a great conversation about transportation. I think we're going to get the opportunity to testify in front of the committee soon. I think she isn't very much in support of that moving forward. So working with all of our legislators in both Senate and House, we will meet with them to make sure that they are advocating as well with her. And hopefully, out of the House at least version, we see a categorical related to transportation across my fingers, working hard. Also, the governor has, is announcing, accepting applications for the Governor's Education Advisory Council. Traverse Connect informed us the governor's staff has reached out to them, asking with help to identify individuals to serve on that governor's education advisory council. I've asked Associate Superintendent Curriculum Instruction Kristin Prokowsky, who's with us, to complete that application. She submitted it, and we are hopeful that she is accepted, and we'll keep you updated on that if she is. And so that is the report that I have for tonight, and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So for the STEM budget, you mentioned at the TC New Tech meeting last week that we, on the finance committee, we've already set aside 7.7 million, and we had a $1.5 million contingency at that time. So by increasing it to $10 million to the restoration of the original amount that was envisioned, do you have an idea for what that means potentially?
Really, it doesn't touch that contingency. We have, again, we were under budget by almost $800,000 on the STEM, the bus wash and the parking. And again, one of the things nice about the bus wash is it's supposed to have a lot more longevity for our buses, the idea of washing those. We also have an allocation in transportation of purchase of some buses. And again, this point with the few miles we put on so many buses, some buses have just been sitting because we're short on drivers. Again, short 12 drivers. We've been, that's generally 12 buses. So we haven't put a lot of miles between COVID and some of those. We're not in a point right now where we really need to buy any buses this year. We have $2 million set aside in the bond next year to buy buses. That point, I think we will get on a rotation to do that. But again, I don't see investing in some buses that we're not going to drive and sit there, not utilizing what we already have. So taking that, we also have some building site funds, especially with Glenn Loomis that we've set aside of about $500,000, that at this point, I feel this is more important of a project that we promised our taxpayers. And again, we have some things, we're going to be seeing some presentation from train down the road, and looking at some of our HVAC stuff and some of that, that some of that money was really identified to set aside for. So at this point, that, those are the funds that will be set, that are being incorporated to put that budget back to where that is. And again, I think that it's the wisest dollars of funds to make sure that what we've promised our community is, and again, you know, making sure that we're not just having buses that sit just to buy more to buy more. And again, with the bus wash, I think we're going to put a year or two more longevity on a lot of our buses, that we've never had an ability to wash those, other than once a year with a company coming in, because we haven't had a facility to be able to do that. So I, Christine and I have analyzed this and very, feel very strong that this, now that we know where a lot of the things are falling with the bond, where we're at dollar-wise, we feel very confident in our ability to be able to do this.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would probably clarify for the new board members, Train, which will come up again a few times, and that was, well, go ahead if you.
Yeah, so we had a presentation, so Train is a global HVAC company that, with heaters and cooling and that. So we actually are working with them. They come in and they come to your facility, and they look at all of your bills, your electrical, your water, your, you know, heating, all those bills, and they take a look at the age and the inefficiencies of your equipment, and they look at what they can do as far as be able to find dollars in savings, literally, so you're not running money down the drain, you know, in essence. So we've asked them to come in and start analyzing. They're right now going through all of those bills and invoices and all of that. At a point here, they will bring a team of engineers that come through and walk through all of our buildings, tunnels, look at our boilers, look at our water heat pumps, they'll look at everything across the board that we're doing, and they can come in and make a recommendation of, if you fix this, you can save that and use the money in savings to be able to fix that. And in other districts that they've done this in, they've actually even been able to show it at times cash flow positive, even still after that. So we're very hopeful that we're able to do some boilers and some heat pumps and some of these things that, we have some money that was set aside, we think very strongly that they're going to come in. And as again, a global HVAC company, if you have the chance on our visits to Montessori, you'll see that the air handlers and such in that building, we're all trained products. And so, and those of you had a chance to see the boilers there versus the boilers at Central Grade or Central High School, it's amazing how different, smaller and efficient they are than ones of 30 years. And so we will be bringing Train at some point in the future to the board to show what those findings were, and to look at moving forward on a performance management system with them.
Thanks. All right. Without any other questions, we will move on to board committee reports. First report out, Board Curriculum Committee, reporting out by Trustee Pack.
We have referred two things to the consent calendar. One is administrative personal development, going to two meetings. The League of Innovative Schools in spring is going to occur in Birmingham, Alabama. And Dr. Van Wagner, Ms. Prokowsky, and Ms. Malby Skotek, who disappeared, will be going.
And an update to that, it's just going to be her and I, Kristin and I, made the decision to have one of us here, so it'll just be Heidi and I at this time.
Okay.
Just as an update for you.
And approximate cost is roughly $4,000. Then the second meeting is Minority Student Achievement Network, which will be in April 2023 at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. And Tiffany Palmaville, if I say that correct? And one other district employee from the Culture and Climate Committee team will attend, and the cost for that is around $3,500. In addition to those two things being added to the consent calendar, we also added two new classes to the course catalog, which includes two Michigan Virtual High School classes, one in health education, the other in employability skills. And students can elect to take those online, and then the credit that they receive for completing those courses would count towards their graduation credits. The next thing that we did was we looked at strategic plan updates, and we were given a picture of what's considered the portrait of graduate competencies, which would include various attributes such as problem-solving, strong character, resilient, team player, critical thinker, lifelong learner, adaptable, effective communicator, and ethical globalist. And I was thinking, after I watched some of the kids present at the STEM presentation at the Opera House, I think some of those kids are able to do a lot of those things without even graduating at this point, which was refreshing to see.
But we want them to graduate.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Okay, the second thing is we had an interesting curriculum timeline update that extended from 2017 to 2030, which just kind of showed what the timeline was for when they were evaluating when different curriculum should be replaced in different schools, different levels, and the process over which that would happen, so that you could kind of see how things were going to line up on a continuing basis over time. Then the fourth thing that I heard about was something called instructional coaching. And this is a coaching model, I believe, was developed by the state based on, quote, "proven research-based methods to embed professional learning and education on a daily practice." And what I gather is we have 13, the equivalent of 13 teachers with experience, track record, proven track record as educators, who then have had additional training to teach them how to be peer coaches. Am I doing this correct? And this is geared towards teachers in the K through 8th grades. The teachers that were selected for this extensive professional training to act as coaches started their training last spring, and the implementation was in this academic year. The areas that they were trained in were things like restorative practices, which I gather is teaching kids to make amends when there's conflict, particularly between kids. Then they also were taught how to deal with essentials and literacy, science of reading, explicit instruction. And then two other things that they kind of combined, it sounded like, called cognitive coaching and no more random acts of coaching. And this is sort of so that all these people are on the same page on how they approach coaching as peers with the other educators who request their help. I'm hoping I'm saying.
Doing well.
They're killing it.
Yeah, because honestly, I'd never heard of this. So a coach's approach, teaching colleagues using questions and goals, not with the purpose that they feel judged or evaluated, that it's very collegial in the approach. And just to give you a little example of how well it was received, they said that they had, they say, a little over 1,780 contacts. And the type of support was they worked with individual teachers about 63% of their time. They talked to grade-level teams about 14%, full staff at various schools 11% of their time, small group, a little under 10%, peer professionals 5.5%. The number of hours of coaching that they provided was a little over 1,246. And the focus of their coaching content was ELA at 47%, behavioral and social emotional learning, I think this is, at 26%, math at 21.5%, social studies a little under 3%, science a little under 3%. 101 participating teachers returned program evaluation. And to the statement, quote, "I felt coaching has had a direct positive impact on my work as a teacher," about two-thirds of them agreed or strongly agreed. And then to the statement, "I felt coaching had a positive impact on our work on the building or district," about a little under three-fourths, a little under 75% agreed and strongly agreed. School administrators were even more complimentary of this. It's interesting, if anyone's interested in how they divide this out, they appear to have four- to six-week coaching cycles, and they can deal with, by FTE, on equivalent, roughly five to 10 teachers per cycle. Teachers use a planning period to participate in it. The coach-to-teacher ratio is approximately 1 to 18. They would very much like to continue this model, and the cost was $1.3 million. The one other thing I'd like to mention is that our teacher-student ratio is 23.1. So it's a close approximation of people-to-people working together. Any questions? Did I?
Very good.
Very good report.
Was that extensive? Any questions?
I actually got a lot out of that, so thank you. All right, moving on, is there any?
Finance.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, there it is. All right, next up is Board Finance and Operations Committee, reporting out by Trustee Raymond.
Yes, I think all the committee meetings were rather lengthy this month, so I apologize. My report's pretty lengthy too, but I'll try to be as efficient as possible. So we met on March 1st at 4:30 in the afternoon, new time. So we did not have any public comments. So we first heard a presentation from Jessica Sullivan on the potential for indoor fieldhouses at Central High. Sullivan on the potential for indoor field houses at Central High School and West Senior High School. Would provide a pretty nice community asset, also allow for quite a few extracurricular and even during-the-day activities at the school. So I believe the executive committee heard something of a similar report, and I believe that was also put on the agenda for this evening, so we will discuss more at that time. Our next item was to, we kept the prior committee meetings as posted, so there were no changes to those. And then, as Dr. Van Wagner mentioned, we accepted, graciously accepted the grant from the Grand Traverse Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians that will be $15,000 to support the Student Support Network. And then quite a few bids and purchases. So starting with a three-year, the committee is recommending the full board approve a three-year contract for custodial supplies. This is with our existing purchasing group, Omnia Partners. And it really just depends on how many purchases are made under this contract, but it's roughly gonna be about a $500,000 annual amount for, again, custodial supplies. That will be funded from the general fund. The next item is Chromebooks, and so the committee, again, is recommending the purchase of our annual allotment of Chromebooks. These are go-to incoming sixth graders and ninth graders. They use those for either their whole middle school or whole high school, depending on which grade they are, and then the sixth graders will get a new one in ninth grade. So this purchase is being recommended to be purchased from Bloom for a total not to exceed $879,784.29 to be funded from the capital bond funds, again, on consent agenda for this evening. The next item is East Middle School Digital Classrooms and Studio Renovations. This will create digital media classrooms and TV studios. This purchase is recommended to be made in the amount not to exceed $79,800 funded from capital bonds. The next item is Eastern Elementary Pre-K Lockers, 50 additional lockers to be installed at Eastern Elementary. This amount is not to exceed $37,000, and is being funded from Community Service Fund's childcare program. The next item is a pretty large one, it's gonna be under discussion. It's for the transportation parking lot and bus wash facility. And again, it's on discussion, so we will be talking about this a little bit later. The next item is the West Senior High weight room renovations, gets quite a bit of use, so I'm told, and needs to be expanded. I think it's gonna almost double in size, is that correct? So this will be a purchase, well, renovation not to exceed $368,500 funded from capital bond funds. The next item is actually in addition to an item that we, I think, approved in the last summer, maybe. So the Central High School tennis courts, when they were redoing, when they started the project, they kind of found that the drainage was not really great for longevity, and so it really didn't last very long the last time that they did this. And so the engineers kind of came up with a new plan to drain it.
Into the exterior.
Yeah, it used to go into the middle of the tennis court and then threw a drain in the middle of the tennis court. And so they are going to, it's gonna increase the cost a little bit. The new amount is $740,328, really, the increase was about $90,000. Okay, so the next items were all informational. We got our normal capital project update. The Montessori school is pretty much done.
Close, I mean, we got a few things left, but.
Getting close.
We're hopeful to have occupancy here.
I was unable to attend the tour that I had, was scheduled for last Friday. But so Montessori, still going well. The West High School Athletic Complex, still going well there out there as well. And then the ISD classrooms at Traverse Heights, those have started, and those are also going well. As we heard in Dr. Van Wagner's update, really no change to, from the state on the budget, so really no budget update during our financing discussion. And then we actually did go into closed session at finance committee meeting to discuss attorney-client privileged information, and nothing really further in that session. There were no other items, and we adjourned at 6:17. Our next meeting is April 5th at 4:30.
All right, and then due to you both having long meetings, that led to a longer executive meeting as well, I think the longest one that I remember. But we did cover a lot, I won't duplicate anything. We did have the Travis Indoor Sports Presentation as well in that committee. We also put the memorials, second reading, and put that on the agenda for discussion tonight and a potential adoption. We had the expanding enhancing emotional health project that was added to consent and then removed today. Dual litigation, which is on the discussion items. And then the informational items, there was a couple of good ones in here, most, I don't know, she won't say, but very exciting news is that we have recently hired five new bus drivers. We, this is, again, a few weeks ago, so we're looking better on busing and hoping.
Open after spring break, we'll go back to normal busing as of right now, that's our hope.
So we are set hopefully the spring break, and if we can keep everyone from hitting the south too hard, we can get everyone back. And responsible, we have everyone driving, we'll be fully staffed for the, well, not fully staffed, but we'll be satisfactorily staffed to run.
Barely staffed, but enough to drive buses.
And then we also did have a socialized responsibility resolution that is put on the agenda for discussion. And one that's, I think, particularly important to highlight that doesn't get too much attention is the Student Support Network. And hearing that just the scope of some of our students that are under that program right now, we have 327 students under the Student Support Network, which provides what most of us would consider extremely basic needs. We, and that number was rising, is rising pretty quickly, and it looks like we were expecting that number to be an additional 10 students next week, and I'm sure probably even higher, as I said, this was a few weeks ago. So something to be aware of, something that I think that people don't necessarily understand how much support the school system provides to students on an all-year basis for needs that typically may not be seen as school. And then other than that, that was most of the meeting, I've skipped over a few items have already been covered, the meeting adjourned at 10:28, and the next meeting is at Thursday, April 6th at 9:00 AM in this room, and I don't have a note on who the rotating board member is.
Philnoy Humphries. Oh, this time it was I, next time it'll be Philnoy. I'm not the rotating. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so trustee Ballinger will be the rotating member, we think. And then next report out, MASBCBA 105, reporting out by trustee Pec.
Hi. I went to a curriculum instructional seminar, and I'll try to encapsulate it in ways that I'm hoping sound interesting to y'all. Michigan uses Common Core standards, which basically were part of a federal program developed in roughly 2010. These outline learning standards that are intended to guide local curriculum development. These should be used by the district as a framework for curriculum development, with the curriculum itself prescribing instructional resources, methods, progression, and additional learning as valued by the local community. They also provide a platform for state assessments, and they provide tools and guidance for evaluation of education biases in instructional materials. The curriculum, the board itself can impact curriculum by committing to high expectations for all students, support effective teaching and learning in every classroom, link the schools to the community, allocate adequate resources for professional learning, which are the teaching staff that works. So it kind of all has to work together to make it work well. The, Michigan does a Michigan Merit Exam each spring to kind of assess across the states where the state where students are falling, and third and eighth graders are tested in math and ELA every year, fourth and seventh graders tested in science, fifth and sixth graders tested in social studies. There's also assessment done of 11th and 12th grade students to kind of see how they are in relation to having skills for job and academic furthering of their life after graduation. Oops, sorry. Now, what was interesting was they also talked a little bit about results. This all sounds like Michigan's got their act together. In 2020, Michigan graduation rate was 82.1%. In 2021 COVID year, it went down to 80.5. The dropout rates in Michigan decreased during COVID to 7.65, which was a half a point less than the national average, so that was good. However, Michigan ranked 40th in the state in childhood education using national testing. The NEE Casey Foundation reported in 2022 that 68% of Michigan's fourth graders aren't proficient in reading, 69% of Michigan's eighth graders aren't proficient in math. Now, this class was for school board members across the state, not specific to TCAPS. The converse of that to keep in mind is that only 32% of Michigan graduates appear to be, well, not graduates, fourth graders, are proficient in reading, only 31% are grade proficient as eighth graders in math. So there's challenges. The TCAPS graduation rate for 2122 was 86.5, so we're above average compared to Michigan. And I thought that that was just kind of interesting to kind of give us a picture of what we have going on. Thank you.
Thanks. And MASBC training, there's obviously endless courses, and I do encourage everyone to do whatever they can, there's always info to be had.
Real quick, I'll just mention that I think Beth is next month's, again, those four board office hours.
No, no, executive committee.
Oh, executive.
The rotating executive.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Executive.
Yep.
Who is she?
Executive next month.
You're executive.
Executive.
All right.
I just crossed me off the calendar, 'cause I was just there.
You were the rotated, you were a sub at the last one, you are the scheduled rotating member at the next one.
And why I was like, I figured it was, okay, so I apologize.
Thank you for telling me that.
You're welcome to have my board office hours.
Yeah, but yeah, onto that.
Really? Well, if somebody, let's, can we do them together?
Board office hours and.
So on that note, on February 23rd, we had our monthly office hours, I was the trustee up that month at Horizon Books on the Menzoni Level from 6:00 to 7:00, and I had four people show up, which I was thrilled to see. And they chose a format that was a little bit different than how I've seen it in the past, where each person wanted to take a turn speaking with me, one-on-one or two-on-one. That was fine, sometimes it's just a free-for-all, where we're all sitting at the table together and talking about whatever. In this case, each person talked to me for 15 or 20 minutes. So of the four people who showed up, one person, who is a social worker with 30 years of experience, was interested in two topics in particular, our DEI resolution that we passed a year and a half ago on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and she wanted to know more about what the district is doing to implement that. And she also was very interested and concerned about mental health services. Then I had two ladies who are both parents, Paula Colombo and Jen Terzman, I did ask for their permission to share their names. They too were very interested and concerned about mental health. They have started on a volunteer basis a student lounge at East Middle School that they have, they are reporting great success with so far in partnership with the teachers there, and they are working with some health workers and other community members to develop a proposal to TCAPS to enhance our mental and emotional health and social well-being in support of our strategic plan. So they are interested in sharing that with Dr. Van Wagner in the near future. And last but not least, I had a parent who has two children in the district, including one at high school, Simitec at West Senior High, and robotics, and she advocated for expanding STEM K through eight, and trying to expand not just our facilities, but also the electives that we offer at West Middle School, East Middle School, trying to grow that pipeline of students who will be interested in STEM, so that it's not too late to reach people who, you know, might not connect with it in high school. So I think that's something we're hearing from the business community as well, that there's a hunger for growing that interest at an earlier age. So I referred all four individuals to the superintendent so that they can give him some direct feedback, and I've shared this information with him as well. And I know at least three of the four have meetings with him in the near future, and they had, at least three of them had met with him in the past. So ongoing dialogue is happening, and the next one is Thursday, March 16th, so this Thursday, March 16th, again, at Horizon Books on the second floor, 6:00 to 7:00 PM, and it will be attended by Vice President Philnoy Humphries. I just want to remind everybody, we make ourselves available on a monthly basis, we are happy to do this service and hear from you directly, so please feel welcome. You always can email us individually or collectively at schoolboard@tcaps.net, but it's always wonderful to connect with people in person as well, if you can make it. Thank you.
All right, with that, then cover the last bit for me as well, so we're out on to the next agenda item, which is consent. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent calendar as amended and without discussion.
Do I have a second? Right, Philnoy, a second? Sorry, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Moving on to discussion items, school safety update, defer to Dr. Van Wagner.
Yeah, so a couple of things for you. We have a team that is participating in statewide, the Office of School Safety of the Michigan State Police is doing a threat assessment protocol training, so we have a cross-section of TCAP staff, including our coordinator of school safety, that will be a part of the group of, and also include some administrators and staff, that will be working on making sure that our threat assessment is coordinated with our local law enforcement agencies. So I'm excited to continue that work and making sure that we're getting the best and the latest information as far as school safety and protocols with that. Also, Patrick has been doing school visits across each building to meet with staff and administrators to give them the results that we're able to disclose from the school safety assessment that was completed, so they have an idea of what are the different things that are there, things that they found well, things that we're gonna be working on, and giving them an idea of what that looks like. So continuing with that, as well as we're gearing up towards the summer, we have some of the more. As well as we're gearing up towards the summer, we have some of the more doors from the school safety grant to be changed out with locks and set and all of that. So we're excited to get going on that. And we're continuing to have conversations on our school liaison officer position, working on, I have a meeting set up with the city manager for City of Traverse City, as well as the chief of police. And then also working on conversations with the sheriff, as well as have a message out to Chuck Corn from Garfield Township, that also is doing some things right now with police force, with the county sheriff's department on Traverse City West and Traverse City West Middle School and High School. And so trying to coordinate all that and really look at what's the best way we can maximize that position and look at even other collaborations to have as much support. And again, for relationships is the key item we're trying to build with students, with those individuals. And so we're continuing to have those conversations and lots to kind of still figure out here over the next month or two. So that's what I have for an update.
All right. Thanks. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So do we have a timeline for when the school, the safer kids?
Oh, so we do not at this point. I have not had any contact. I know that Jay was here, but I know that they're coming up on having something. And so I know that they know as soon as they're ready to be able to contact and we'll make sure that, again, through probably our committee structure, we'll have an opportunity for some presentations.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, moving on to discussion item B, board policy, second reading. We've heard it multiple times on the memorials, so I didn't know if we have a motion to adopt.
I move the Board of Education adopts new board policy, seven two five one, memorials.
A second. Any other discussion? All right, Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next discussion item on the agenda is a resolution for social host awareness. Just I am going to abstain from this. I clearly have a conflict of interest. I obviously do strongly encourage only responsible use of alcohol, but I think just for conflict of interest, I will defer this one to Vice President Humphries.
All right. Thank you, and I will defer it to Dr. Van Wagner.
So each year, Up North Prevention is a group that works towards making sure that there is communication to parents and families about the dangers of alcohol use in minors. Often comes about right here around prom time and and those kind of activities. And so this is a communication that they just hope boards will adopt and spread, again, as a community, communication and awareness of the dangers of that and making sure that safe decisions are made because we want all of our students safe and they're on graduation day and and they're for the start of school next year if they're underclassmen. And so again, this is the same language that we adopted last year. So they have presented this to the board for approval.
All right. Is there any discussion?
I just have one question. I think the verbiage has been in place since, what, 2017? Is that correct? And there were just a couple real minor details I had when I was reading. And I'm wondering if maybe next year we might look at some of the language.
Be happy to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, sure. I move that the Board of Education approves the Social Host Responsibility Month Resolution as presented.
A second.
Okay, Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Okay. Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Epstein.
Okay, motion carries.
And Ms. Vice, will this be posted to our, the TCAPs webpage?
Yes, it will be.
The board, tcaps.net/board.
Yep.
Okay. Great, thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, transportation parking lot renovation, deferring to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, we've talked a little bit about this. So this is a project that's been long, a part of the original bond process and and presented early on in that. We have a great group of of transportation employees, our drivers, all of our mechanics, all of our, again, facilities and operation runs right next to as well in that area. And if you've had the chance to be out there, it's on Cast Road, South Cast Road, out kind of towards Keystone. Unfortunately, it's been a facility that because of drainage and those issues, it really doesn't have a lot. So it gets muddy and it gets muddy sometimes more than ankle deep. So we've had many occasions, especially when spring thaw, buses that get stuck and rutted and and again, without an ability to have been able to wash buses because by by law under Department of Environmental Quality and others, we can't just wash the things off of diesel fuel and stuff. It actually has to be put in containment. And and then those tanks have to be pumped and they're they're taken out from that standpoint. So we've never had that ability. And so many times, if you see very dirty Traverse City Public Schools buses, we've actually had to have a company come in the, once or twice a year, they have to put tarps and everything out to collect all that water and the buses get one, maybe two washes a year. And you can just imagine in a car with that of the salt, the dirt, all of that elements of what that does to the underbody as far as rust. You know, unfortunately, in Michigan, we see so many times that our bus bodies rust out before the engines go at that point. And one of the ways that you can extend the life of a bus is by washing it often. And so this gives us the ability to, one, be able to wash those buses in a drive-through bus wash. And the second is it creates a paved lot where we have drainage and storm sewer, and so that's able to be collected and run off properly off of it. So again, we don't have the, all of the mud and the bus ruts and and being stuck. It creates a first-class facility long run. Again, as we are trying to recruit drivers for them to have a, again, a facility that is just, they're able to walk out to their bus in and not slip and fall. We've had many workman's comp issues of slip and falls on the property because, again, there's lots of ice that we can't divert. And so we have the opportunity to this project that is under budget by about eight hundred thousand dollars, as I mentioned before. And so we have listed here the the bid, which is five million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency from capital bond funds. Again, all the input had happened early on from our drivers. It'll be a renovation of area of our current facility there that allows the mechanics to be able to service it right next door in that bay for different soap and and water and maybe issues or whatever you might have in the long run with it. And so we are excited to be able to present this to the committee for, or to the full board for approval.
Yeah, we, I think we heard a presentation, probably a couple of presentations. We heard one back in December, Finance Committee meeting, and then obviously we hit this pretty hard just this last week. I think we would have probably had it on consent, but just this year, dollar amount, we wanted to bring it for anyone to have further discussion about it tonight, so.
I've got a quick question. I hadn't had a chance to watch the Board Finance meeting, but did anything come up about opening this up to area school districts to use?
You know, we've had, there's been partnerships, again, you know, as you well know, I've only been here two and a half years, but there have been partnerships in the past from that standpoint of Kingsley, you know, there was a partnership once. And so I think we're always open to some of that. I know that, you know, I think that that anytime there's something that we can work with another entity, not only school districts, but if there are any public or private, you know, other entities that we might be able to partner with, that is a win-win, you know, from that standpoint. I think we will look at always from that standpoint. One of the things that we are doing is running the conduit as well for one row of buses so that if we are fortunate enough to get some of the grants that are out there for right now, electric buses, that we are able to put infrastructure in in the future. It's not built in, but the conduit is to run the wiring along a whole element. So we are planning for that as well, that who knows in the future where some of that goes. But so we are trying to look at all opportunities for the future. We already have many nonprofits that use our facility for gas, actually, because we have the ability to have easily the the non-tax on those nonprofit entities. So they will come and fill up vehicles and such and pay for that. We have a system all in place that we do a fill-up station for for gasoline and diesel now. I've seen many times other entities of of community partners that are doing that. So we'll continue to reach out and look at any opportunities that, again, especially if we can bring some revenue dollars to the district and it's a win. Again, I think we're going to have a lot of our own, but we'll take a look at it for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you remind us, what is the estimate for the increased longevity of a bus with regular bus washing?
You know, we we think about two or three years from that standpoint. You know, it's, depends on the harshness of a winter and that element. But, you know, at the cost of a hundred and five hundred and ten thousand dollars now a bus for a diesel, an electric's almost four hundred thousand. So you can imagine if we can extend the life of that bus and the body, you know, those extra years, it's real dollars, especially when you're talking a fleet of, you know, sixty to eighty buses. It's real dollars that it should save us in the long run. And and again, having an opportunity lately, I've looked at other districts our size downstate and drove to their lot, their their facilities and stuff. And and many, many of them have those bus washers, they have paved lots with sewer system, storm sewer and these things that our facility will now be the, you know, the level that it should be for our employees.
All right. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that. It's almost the price of a STEM lab. It's better than the price of a STEM. I'm sorry.
No, sorry, just hanging on there.
Are we good?
Yep.
All right. I move that the Board of Education approves the transportation parking lot renovation and bus vehicle wash, including the addition of the facilities lot paving, paving awarding and the various bidders as presented for a total amount not to exceed five million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-nine, which includes a ten percent contingency funded from capital bond funds.
Second. All right. Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Epstein.
Motion carries. Do we want to do signings?
Yeah, we can. You know, I know we have some students who are looking at some other events, so if somebody who want to get a signings, we can take a moment here and do that. I know that we have some students.
I know, but I, that one's going to be a while and they only have B and A and a half, so I don't want them to do.
Okay. Fair enough. You can go to anybody.
You can go to anybody.
Anybody, anybody.
Okay, moving on to the next discussion item, Travis Indoor Sports Complex, deferring to Dr. Val Wagner.
Okay, so in committee, two weeks ago, in both the Finance and Executive Committee, we had the opportunity to hear presentations on the Trevor's Indoor Sports Complex. This is a group that has been working towards this for quite a long time. So we have with, we had presentation from three individuals, Jessica Sullivan, as well as Warren Call with Trevor's Connect and Trevor Takash with TC Tourism. So you had the opportunity to be able to see those presentations. Ms. Humphries was the only one that did that, but I know did get the chance to see that on video as well. And so an executive committee was asked by the committee to put it on the agenda just for discussion. It really wasn't decided really how, where that discussion would go, but thought it was important to acknowledge those presentations and conversation. And so this is an opportunity for board members. I know that they are here, I believe. I saw Warren earlier.
Yep.
And so if there's any questions that we, the board might have from that standpoint on that project that they're working on, or thoughts or that, this is a time simply for the board to start a discussion. And really, that's where it's thought from the committee, I think, to go from there, so.
I guess I'm happy to start. First of all, thank you for coming forward to our two committees and bringing your presentation. I know we asked a lot of questions during the committees. There is a lot to unpack here for us, I think, but just as a preliminary step, I would like to express open-mindedness about this. And I think we've got a lot to learn and hear about the idea of an athletic complex or two athletic complexes at our two high schools. Please understand that we have not started our listening sessions with the community yet for our bond. So we've got to hear from a lot of different groups of the community, what their needs and wants are. So this is really early for us in the process. Then there's also the issue of operating, potentially. And so I just want to say, express my open-mindedness to this, but also want to weigh it in the long run against other wants and needs in the district. And I guess just one logistical question I have is in terms of the potential for state funding, the federal funding to be passed through, are there imminent deadlines that we need to be aware of in terms of that public partnership? You know, deadlines by which the state has to allocate it to school districts, deadline by which the district has to obligate the funds, and then a deadline by which the district would have to expend the funds that you could share with us?
I can, so a little background as well, just to make it clear, is there has been an informal group meeting for several years, a decade plus, which I recently found out did have a name called the Travis City Indoor, Travis Indoor Sports Coalition. I've been to many of the meetings, but didn't realize it actually had a name. And part of that came with, part of the reason I came to that group was the economic development side. At the time, I was on the Executive Committee at the Michigan Economic Development Corp. And had just retired from that last year. And so I kind of went because I think that we, it's very important for us to make sure that if there's funding that is already spent, I am a fiscal conservative, but at the time when money is allocated from the federal government and it's not going back to the federal government, it'll go to other states if we don't spend it. I wanted to make sure that if we're gonna pay the tax bill on it, then we're gonna get our fair representation in Northern Michigan. So with that, that's kind of why I went to the group and kind of highlighted what I think is coming down over the next several years. And it seems to be playing true, is with a lot of federal money that came down, it has to be allocated, it has to be committed. It's got some nuances of how it has to get allocated and committed. And it has to be all expended. And there is a particular deadline, I believe it's September 20, September 2026. It has to be spent, it has to be products completed. Five?
December 31st, 2026.
December 31st?
Obligated by December 31st, 2024.
There you go. So you've got the two deadlines, you have to commit it, and then you have to spend it. So that is a relatively, for the amount of money that they have, it's a relatively aggressive timeframe. You have to have shovel ready products, you have to move fast. And I think that the state are starting to indicate that they, it's hard, we're seeing in most states that it's hard to actually allocate such funds. So when you talk about a deadline, is there a particular one? Yes, there is an end goal, but it's, they're not gonna leave it to the last minute. They've got to make sure that the projects are coming through. So every month or two, you see another program that comes up that we need to make sure that when the program comes up for that would fit this, that that would be represented, I guess. So no firm.
That's fair, because, because of the 2024 bond coming up, you know, it would, it would have to be at the first part of that bond, in other words, to be completed.
Yeah, and it would, yeah, that would.
That's, that's, yeah, no, helpful to know. So I think others probably have some questions or comments, too.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to express my support for the project. I think that, you know, there's not really anything like a field house, and let alone two field houses in Northern Michigan, other than Boynton City, which is relatively new. And I think Petoskey might have something. But obviously, in the Traverse City region, there's nothing like this. I think that it would serve, obviously, obviously, you go straight to sports, but I think there's a lot of other activities that could go on in a facility like this. You know, a lot of curriculum activities as well that could go on in a facility like this. So, you know, if, if, if they weren't at a TCaps site, I could see that especially the athletic department wanting to use a facility like this, in which case, we would probably have to pay rent if they weren't ours. So, you know, I mean, I think there's some opportunity cost there as well to take into consideration. But I do think that it's a, it's, it's something that a lot of people would support. And I've supported above it as well.
Yeah, and I think I'm, to Trustee Ballinger's point, I think my only hesitation is, obviously, we're unable to say yes or no to like a dollar amount or a percent, anything really, because we're just at the beginning of our bond process. We've obviously got numerous community groups to hear from. We've obviously heard STEM, but I think there's a continued need for STEM. We've got music and arts that have got some, we've got central grade, we've got safety, you know, things we've all heard today, just from public comment that I think we all know that needs to be addressed. And we, I believe we're gonna schedule, this is, going to have scheduled, kind of informative things pretty much for the next several months, right?
I know we've had some expression, you know, I've talked to some board members that, you know, expressed some others, you know, we know that again, the school safety is, Josie just mentioned, is safer schools. I think that, you know, we'll see presentation from them. I know that we've got some others. Flannoy has mentioned, maybe to me, you know, a group as well, you know, to be able to see our, our music and, and our, you know, performing and vocal arts and the facilities they have and needs, I think is one that, that I've had the chance to talk to Wendy Wolf Schlaroff and that. And I think, you know, having them come in possibly next month and be able to present to committee. And then our architects are going to start doing public forums in April, early April, right after spring break, that will be going to all our buildings across the district, getting input from staff, from neighborhood, you know, members' parents, taxpayers, you know, across to get ideas of what everybody has from that standpoint. So it'll get rolling relatively quick here. You know, a lot of that input, but again, we're just not quite there, pretty much. After spring break, that'll really, really start. And then it'll begin to gather that data. And then architects and constructor managers have a process that they begin to work with the board to identify what those, those priorities are.
And I know from, from my aspect, we've had a lot of discussions about it. And I think it's a, it's a beautiful idea. I have a lot of curiosity around it. And some of that curiosity extends to how it'll work. And operationally, you know, how it's sustainable. And so I've asked, for example, for timelines related to other projects we need to get done in the, in, you know, such as central grade school, et cetera, et cetera. So those are things that I think we really need to look at and make sure that everything fits. I'm hopeful that it can.
Yeah. And that's, you know, the job we have of our architect and CM to do exactly that and put that in, because we sell a series of bonds. And, you know, with cash flow, you can only do so much at some time. And the reality of contractors, there's just, you know, if you're looking to have a certain thing, then electrical, there's only so much work that they can do. And so you're limited sometimes by that. So very much, and they'll begin to, as we get all that information, start to look at how you piece that together.
May I ask a question? The money that you were talking about, that you thought was coming federally towards the states, how broad can that be applied? Is that gonna be very specific to, you have to get out and run on the field? Or is it gonna be a little bit more broad than that?
It's nothing to do with this specific project. It's about just development in general. So there's, when it gets down to the state level, then it's where, that's where the programs get designed. So as you'll just see these words, but this is not specific. It wasn't federal money for a sports or anything. It's just, there's development.
Economic development funding.
Because I was thinking, you know, when you were doing the presentation on the choral music at Interlock, and I looked up the seating of coursin', it's 952 seats in it. And they probably had to do a coursin' because they probably couldn't do it.
Correct. And that's one of the things that I know that our music folks have is looking at Lars Hockstead and a real 21st century renovation. Lot was done by the Traverse City Film Festival, you know, almost, I think, a decade ago, maybe at this point. But, you know, I think looking at, you know, there's still a lot of the sound acoustics, seating, maybe expansion, some of those things.
Parking.
You know, you know, to look at.
Parking.
But again, as we look at central grade, that's all a part of the equation, you know, of what all that looks like that has to be discussed in that.
Yeah. And you think about safety of walkways, you know, and you're parking way out in the boondoggle, coming in, and a lot of the people that are going to some of those things are older.
And it's probably block with snow to half the year.
Why would you think that?
I like the idea of not having another graduation under the sun. Because a field house would be really nice for graduation.
Well, but, you know, to be honest with you, I mean, having an Interlock and at the Kresge Auditorium is pretty strong.
It is very, very nice.
It does, it has a roof. So we are fortunate to have that with plenty of seating that. But it's an outdoor venue, doesn't work all that well for, you know, March.
I can say, the one time it was outdoor, obviously, the total cream was particularly hot. Like, that was.
About the hottest of graduation.
We all have our straw hats to commemorate.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got, I've got a couple of things. Just having been the one board member who wasn't able to be at either one of the presentations, I just want to kind of put some questions out there and, and a couple of comments. And John, I would like to ask you if you would go to the, go to Wendy and the music staff and have them come forward with their wants and needs. And to shoot, my advice is to shoot for the moon, those people. And I would love to see them at committee reports and possibly even a board meeting to make that presentation. I worry, and I've mentioned this to other board members, I just worry a little bit about, before, before I start that, I do plan to go forward into this project with open mind, and open mind as well. But I do worry about the public optics of something like this coming on so fast and furious to us. I know it's been in the community for years, but being brought to our attention pretty quick and fast. And I would hate for the optics out there to be that certain major projects, central grade, the updating of the music facilities, would be, would be jumped or skipped and put this in front of. That's not the case at all. There's gonna be a timeline drawn out and we're gonna, we're gonna go through the process. I, in watching the presentations, it was mentioned, a couple of things. I've got a question about why only one hour of, of walking open to the public per, or Monday through Friday? I'd love to see that extended. And then I know that's in, in planning down, way down the, down the field. The other thing is, if the band is gonna be able to use it, it will need to be lined for a football field, a regulation football field.
And a director's tower.
And a director's tower, that would be nice. But, but for the inside facility, for a marching band to be able to use it, they can't use a soccer field lining. It would need, need to be a, a regulation football field. I'm concerned about things like that Beth brought up, about the parking, and then operational costs, you know, just sustainability. So, but it is exciting. I think it does bring a lot to our community as far as being able to host world-class events here and expose our kids to a really nice indoor facility. So I'm interested in it and open-minded. So thank you for bringing it to us.
Any other questions as well? I think out of.
One of the things that I think that, you know, I would suggest to the board is there are other, you know, communities that have done this. Recently, Jenison opened one right next to their high school, right connected to their parking lot. Brighton has done that. Jackson, Ypsilanti, Lincoln. And so one of the things we could consider doing is, is creating a committee or a couple for that matter, and might divide and conquer looking at a few. And having the opportunity to go and talk to some of those superintendents, athletic directors, band directors, others to talk about how they've used that facility. What are their costs? How are they operationally, you know, doing that? Are they actually generating funds? Are they not? Are they covering their costs? How are they maintaining the building and their plan for the future? I think these are a lot of the things that came up in the Finance Committee. And I think it would be great for, you know, to, to kind of hear it from colleagues across the state that are doing this, so that you really get a true idea, idea of what that might look like. So there are plenty of districts at this point that are, that are down that road and have been able to, you know, again, work with their community partners, work with, you know, across the, the school district spectrum. And so that is something, if it was the board's purview, I'd be happy to, to work with, with Jessica and Warren and Trevor to possibly, again, have a community cross-section, including board members and others, the opportunity to be a part of that, if that's something the board thought would make sense.
I would certainly love to go on a study tour, if you will, if that's what you want to call it. And just, we can bear in mind, too, that if it's an educational purpose like this, we can travel as more than three of us at any given time.
It probably won't be fancy, you know, it'll probably be, you know, it's not gonna be a school bus, although I could drive it.
Yeah, that's what I want.
You know, but, but it will probably be, you know, a caravan of cars or things like that. And, you know, we might be able to figure out a Taco Bell or two or something along the way. But, you know, that is something we could definitely try to set up.
I think we got a nice start with the spreadsheet you sent, too.
Yeah. And that's just some initial thoughts from some of the other superintendents and ADs that just gives us a quick couple day snapshot. Like I said, I think, you know, there's a lot of questions there that you all would have and others in our community, you know, to be a part. And so I think that's something we could easily try and set up in the next 30 to 45 days to give the board some thoughts as this is fresh, kind of on the mind, if that's what we wanted to do.
Yeah. I'm sure you have this in mind, but I would suggest getting a range of different business models.
And I think we'd see that, you know, in, in the different ones.
Different sizes and locations. Some of them, like Jack's, Ypsie, Lincoln is not, I think they're not, I can't remember, I won't quote, but one of them I looked at was not, was co-located at the high school, right next to its stadium. And another one was many miles away. And more community focused with a weight room and people paying $20 monthly fees. So there are a lot of different models out there of how this could work. So I think if we saw a range, that would give us a better idea.
And we could do that.
So coming out of this, I feel like there's a couple of things that I think it would be giving you direction to write a letter of support with certain clarifications? Or is this something we would have to craft? Like a letter? Because obviously, I think that's, I think we're all excited and intrigued about it and want.
I think at this point, I can provide a letter of support based on the feedback. I've got, you know, I've got proof you all said it, so.
I didn't want to word, like, figure out.
Yeah. And I think that's something that I can craft to the, you know, the coalition. Working on that. And I know there's other grants and different things in thought of some planning grants. You know, that's a big part is just initially to get some things and drawings and things like that. There's funds that I think are out there from some different entities in the state, especially in Northern Michigan, with economic development and such. So, you know, if the board was okay with me sending a letter that, you know, in, in support of moving forward with, with learning and, and understanding more and excited about the opportunities, you know, I'd be happy to do that. And I'd also be happy to, you know, to have, work with maybe Scott, if the board's fine with that, to try and craft it.
I would prefer even, just, even though there's no conflict, just because I was in.
With Flannoy at that point, and happy to, you know, to, to craft that. And I will win, and products done, share it with the rest of the board members if, you know, that's fine from that standpoint. And then, which hopefully gives Traverse Connect and, and TC Tourism, all the other partners a part of the coalition, the opportunity to know where, you know, that, that we're definitely interested in further conversations and, and see how we can begin to get that planning for learning and more forward.
And I think on top of that, I mean, our actions, like if we're gonna go on tours to look at buildings and facilities, and you're working on numbers and how everything would work, I think hopefully with you guys, clearly, there's gonna be a lot of intent that we're excited and trying to figure out how this would work and trying to cover all the details. So when we get to that bond planning later in this year, we're.
It'll be able to be in the broad discussion.
Ready to go. And it'd be a factual, big part of the discussion, so.
Athletic directors are already kind of gathering information.
You know, they are. And we, I shared a spreadsheet, and I think it was very quick. You know, they only literally from presentations last week, I gave them a few days and to get, it's athletic season, the finals and, you know, for winter sports and all that. So I think there's a lot deeper study to do. I think really looking at truly operations and exact costs. And a little bit more maybe if we can get our hands on some line item budget kind of things versus here's the X number, you know. And like I say, in, in giving board members and community members and business partners the opportunity to say, hey, I have this question. Now that I see this, I wonder about that. And be able to sit down and get that. I think that's something we can put together.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just had a question. I know it's just words, but words can mean things, especially in the legal context. So I just wanted to check, does the phrase "letter of interest" versus "letter of support" have a meaningful difference to, you know, the intended recipients of this? Would one be viewed as more binding, more of a commitment than the other? Because I think we have an interest here. We have an interest here.
Thoughts, wonderings? Anything Trevor or Jessica or Warren to add from that thought?
I don't believe from a legal standpoint, there would be a difference there. Nothing commits the board and board to the case. Simply just an invitation for us to look for Trevor and Julia. But I think it's important to recognize, too, this is a pretty loose coalition. If you're making an overture to, you know, no, no organization per se, so I wouldn't say, from my standpoint, that's kind of the backbone of this group that gets together on a semi annual quarterly basis at times. I have no concerns about it personally. People that get together rather than just.
And that may have to change in the future. I think that's something that would also have to be discussed and looked at from that standpoint. So like I said, very preliminary, but I think, you know, it gets even more people coalescing around that thought. I think it's important to also have some of our labor groups, for instance, as well as part of that. And so I think, you know, I'll, if the board's good with that, I'd like to work with these three to sit and talk about who might be on that. And again, and it might be a couple of them going in different ways and then coming together and say, we saw this and we saw that. And, you know, you could do a Grand Rapids kind of visit and then you could do a Southeast Michigan kind of visit from that standpoint, even just, that way you're not, you know, making this a day and a half venture for people or something like that as well, so.
Agreed.
And I could probably answer your question.
Yeah, please.
It's like a letter of intent, but, which is not legally binding unless you make it so. You have to expressly intend, you know, say that in the letter that it is legally binding.
Right. And, and this is primarily to show some progress with potential funders, right, private or governmental?
The, 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 the chicken that can't pull the horse, the problem is, is there's so much work that needs to be done to get this, because this is really rare. This is a really rare concept, I believe. And John can tell me, sorry, I didn't mean to jump into you, but John can tell me if, if you hear this otherwise. But there's very few public-private partnerships of this kind.
Correct, correct. This, this is unique. I think the exciting part is that if we have the ability to take advantage of some of these dollars that quite honestly are going for, in my personal opinion, things that are not as productive for our, our communities, our economic development, our, our communities for growth. I think there's, you know, we, I mean, just quite frankly, you know, we just saw $490 million go to Ford to build a battery plant in Marshall, right? And so there's lots of projects in Southeast Michigan and South Michigan, Southwest. And so I think that there's some real eagerness to make sure that Northern Michigan gets, you know, some opportunities. And with our, our tourism industry, you know, the opportunity of maybe some of these weekends that our hotels are very slow. And that as we're trying to make sure that those that support us, many of these businesses that are, mind you, pay 18 mils on their taxes to support our school district and our children. This is an opportunity also and a way to give back to them, to be able to, you know, create economic development and economic strength, to be able to make Traverse City even more vibrant in the wintertime, where sometimes, you know, it gets real slow and it's hard to keep people employed and some of that. This is an opportunity, I think, for us to take dollars that are going to other. other people and try and get a chunk back of these funds back for our region. And I think that's exciting and not have it be, again, unfortunately, again, as I think Scott said, as a fiscal conservative, there's a tax burden that all Americans are paying on this. But at the same point, let's not get a double whammy and not get an opportunity to make it more economically, you know, development, economic development and economically stronger for our region. And this is one way and one opportunity to try and go about that.
And to the point I was guess normally, I think we would be further down before we flush out where even to where we are, but because of the level of work they've got to do. And if we were going to include in bomb planning, we need to know if that's even feasible. So they need to do a lot of work as well. So I think that's why we're in this kind of weird timing where it came about so quickly.
Right. Could we just run it through Connie Taylor and Trune about about, yeah, the legal and potential legal implications? And just the last thing I want to say, I mean, I I understand this could be a win, win, win for the community and for TCAPS. I just want to be mindful to knowing the the obligated and expended deadlines that we have, I feel like the board of the last two years and the current board, we have really talked a lot about Central Grade School and I just don't want to jeopardize that timeline any any further.
Hundred percent.
I don't think any, I don't think anyone would ever want to endanger that.
And I'm sure the Central Grade neighborhood will be at the first meeting at Central Grade to express what they have as far as wants for Central Grade and Larry's accent. So.
All right. Any other questions or comments or direction? Remember, we, this is your time to do it to give John any direction that we can have discussion on. After this, it's up to John to take our individual thoughts and put them together. So good luck, good luck. All right. Without any other questions, we'll move on to public comment number two. There is public comment. All right. So the board has set aside this time for public comment. Individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy zero one six seven dot three.
Joan O'Neil.
Good evening. My name is Joan O'Neil and I'm the parent of two TCAP students. I'm here to talk about STEM tonight. Chime in about that. I know you've heard a lot of it. So I appreciate you listening. First of all, I was in attendance on Tuesday for the presentation of the preliminary plans for the STEM labs. And I just want to say thank you to Dr. Van Wagner and also to Trustee Pack and to Trustee Ballinger and Heidi for being there, for listening. I'm very excited as a parent. I can't speak much for the the size of the rooms or some of the items that were brought up, but I think as a parent, I'm very, very excited. My oldest was just entering fifth grade when the bond proposal was put before voters and he's going to be, when this is done, knock on wood, a senior. So so very excited. And I think it's great for not only the robotics teams, but the students in in those two high schools. So I also came to plead to the board to, you know, keep the money where it was. So I guess I'll just skip past that and just, you know, give my support to the to the reinstatement of the ten million for STEM, for the STEM labs. And then finally, I want to echo the sentiment that's been shared already tonight in terms of creating that pipeline for STEM, not just for the robotics teams, but STEM is one of those, I mean, it's it's just a, it's a career that touches almost everything we do. And it's certainly, if you look at Networks Northwest, their their hot jobs forecast and you look at the state forecast, almost every job on the hot job, the hot and high demand, high paying jobs are STEM related. So the early we can prepare these kids, present these these kids, ignite some sparks in in elementary kids, middle school kids, the better and help them prepare for career or college. We have a pipeline for arts and music. They're in middle school. My count may be off by one or two, but there are twenty four orchestra choir and band electives and fourteen visual art electives. And there are three STEM electives for for our middle schoolers. And then we also have a pipeline for athletics in TCAP's LEAP program, the TCAP supported programs that we help that TCAPs, you know, oversees and manages. There are nineteen programs for sports, both at elementary and middle school levels through LEAP and zero for STEM. So again, I just want to challenge TCAPs, challenge parents, challenge the community to help create that pipeline for not just the high schoolers, but the robotics, but for the elementary and middle school level two. All right. Thank you.
Okay, next is Mike Grolow.
Good evening. I just wanted to follow up from the from the from the event last, it was last week. I was, first of all, I was super excited about the preliminary drawings that were shown and really appreciated the presentation by Dr. Van Wagner and and Heidi. And I was equally excited that the STEM and the business communities are are re-engaging with with the board and the administration. I was having a discussion with with Dr. Van Wagner and we were commenting that prior to COVID, that there was, there was a lot more dialogue, there was a lot more communication. And of course, COVID interrupted a lot of that. And so I, through this all, I'm really encouraged that 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 we're reigniting that discussion and reigniting that in that dialogue. And so and I'm very appreciative of that. And finally, I wanted to to say thank you for the engagement and the responsiveness of this board and this administration. I've worked with a lot of public bodies and that's not something you can always count on. It's not something that's always the norm. And I've been, I've been, it's been, it's been just really refreshing. I just want to thank you all for for the support, not not only the support, but for reaching out and for talking and asking questions. And hey, we're here to listen during the during the the community forum, Dr. Van Wagner mentioned on multiple occasions, hey, come to my coffee hour, come to, come, talk to us. We, we, we want to, we want to hear your concerns. We want to to engage. And and that's just so refreshing. I just want to thank you for that. And and I'm really excited about the opportunities to continue the dialogue. So thank you.
Okay, next is Kenneth Goyck.
Hi, my name is Ken Gritz. I'm a senior at West and I'm the president of the Simtech Student Society and the National STEM Honors Society. I wanted to express my appreciation for all the STEM programs that I've been able to participate in through TCAPs. As I've been applying for colleges and scholarships over the last year, the experiences I've had because of Simtech and the Simtech teachers are what really gave me an advantage in a huge pool of applicants. I was able to write about my internships, exposure to a research lab, hands on experience with engineering equipment, my opportunities for leadership, my teacher's guidance, and how I found my exact field of interest in engineering. Simtech has made a huge difference for me. And like many kids in the district, I'm from a middle class, single parent household, and affording college was going to be a real struggle for my family. But these STEM experiences have helped me to receive an award from Michigan Tech University, which is a four ed scholarship. This amazing opportunity has made it possible for me to go to college and pursue my dreams of becoming an engineer. I'm glad to see that TCAPs is expanding these programs and investing in the new STEM wing. It'll help students in our district develop the tech skills they need and allow them to think about their future career possibilities. By extending our STEM programs, the district will also help students set themselves apart in their college and scholarship applications. It makes a big difference in kids like me being able to go to college. Thank you for building a strong STEM foundation for TCAP students.
Thank you. Jessica Sullivan.
That was amazing. I just wanted to take a moment. Jessica Sullivan from the Traverse Indoor Sports Coalition, also mother of four in the community, and just wanted to thank you as the board for having an open mind and the dialogue and a conversation about the Traverse Indoor Sports Complex. I know that it did come to you as a new and exciting idea. So we welcome the opportunity. And so myself, on behalf of Trevor Takash and Warren Call and the other individuals that we've been working with, we look forward to working with you and we're available for you as a resource and and look forward to exploring this further. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We are moving on to the next discussion item, which is a closed session pending mediation. Do I have a motion?
I move to enter into closed session under section eight, one H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen dot two six eight, one H, to discuss contents of an attorney-client privileged communication exempt from disclosure under the Michigan Freedom of Information Act and to consider a privileged written attorney-client communication, attorney communications dated February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three, as allowed by section eight, one H of the Open Meetings Act.
All right, any discussion? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger.
Yes.
Trustee Bird.
Yes.
Trustee Newman Vale.
Yes.
Trustee Pack.
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. We're now in closed session. It doesn't look like anyone would be left by the time we get.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is Leanne Merche and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPs. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it. And I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, you're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road. So I thought, well, you know, I'm going to try. It's because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPs offers jobs with elsewhere within the the system.
Between routes, I used to, for twelve, thirteen years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign on bonus. It's a win win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPs is you understand is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know, it's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
So I'm talking to kids all day. And that experience is really heartwarming. And I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is Leanne Merchie and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving school bus, is the best job on earth. So, I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So, I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So, it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs with elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know? It's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
So, I'm talking to kids all day and that experience is really heartwarming and I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is Leann Murchy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs with elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School, and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know? It's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
So I'm talking to kids all day and that experience is really heartwarming and I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is Leann Murchy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
My name is Leann Murchy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me
Because I would be on the same time schedule.
We will return to open session. We are now in open session.
that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth.
Next item on the agenda is discussion, Juul settlement resolution.
So I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approves the Juil settlement resolution as presented.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree,
A second.
Any discussion?
and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road."
All right, Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Byrd.
So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try."
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Because I would be on the same time schedule.
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale.
We will return to open session.
Yes.
We are now in open session.
Trustee Pack.
Next item on the agenda is discussion, Juul settlement resolution.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Do I have a motion? That was the last item on the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education approves the Juul settlement resolution as presented
I will not have any closing remarks at this time. And the next board meeting is Monday, April 10th, at 20:23 PM in this building
with payment of $200,000 from the capital bond contingency fund.
and online and on TV 190. Megan, please conduct a roll call vote. With that, a motion to adjourn. So moved. All right, no objection.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger.
Yes.
Trustee Byrd.
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale.
Yes.
Trustee Pack.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next discussion or next item is a closed session portion of the agenda.